Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today for our Tuesday, September 12, 2023, business meeting. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
We do. I do need to make a note. Consent items A and B need to be pulled. There was a notice error. We attached the wrong meeting minutes for both of those, and they're incomplete notice. I apologize for not catching that sooner.
Okay, thank you so much, Attorney Garcia. Any additional action needed on that?
No, we just won't include those in the consent today.
Okay, great. So with that, let me ask, are any disclosures for items on this agenda for Commissioners?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we're going to move on to ceremonies and proclamations. And I see some of my favorite people on the planet here with us today. We are so pleased that you all here are joining us. But we're doing a couple of resolutions. The first resolution is proclaiming September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And we have Laura Sincony from our Mental Health Initiative presenting. Laura?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Laura Sincony for staff, reading the resolution proclaiming September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month for the Board's consideration and approval. Whereas suicide is a serious public health issue in the United States, with a record-high 49,500 people dying by suicide in the U.S. last year. And whereas nationally, for every person who dies by suicide, millions more seriously consider suicide, make a plan, or attempt suicide. And whereas suicide ranked as the ninth-leading cause of death in Colorado in 2022, decreasing by 6.1% from 2021, but remains the number-one cause of death among adolescents and young adults in Colorado aged 15 to 24 years old. And whereas people experiencing a mental health crisis, including contemplating suicide, can now call 988 to reach the statewide Colorado Crisis and Support Line run by Rocky Mountain Crisis Partners. Rocky Mountain Crisis Partners is also the local national suicide prevention provider. Switching to an easy-to-remember, 988 as the 911 for suicide prevention and mental health crisis services will make it easier for Americans in crisis to access help, the help that they need, and decrease the stigma surrounding suicide and mental health issues. People can also call 1-844-493-TALK or text TALK to 38255 to reach the Colorado Crisis Line. And whereas suicide is a complex issue, and not only the result of illness, but also impacted by societal conditions that stigmatize certain groups or mental health itself. And whereas Douglas County recognizes certainly certain disproportionately vulnerable and at-risk groups based on state and local assessments, including middle-aged men, pre- and postnatal mothers and families, LGBTQ+ youth, older adults, and veterans. And whereas LGBTQ youth in Douglas County are up to 10 times more likely to attempt suicide, five times more likely to make a plan, and four times as likely to seriously consider attempting suicide compared to their straight peers. Middle-aged men represent the largest group who die by suicide in Douglas County in number. Older adults in Douglas County have the highest rate of suicide per 100,000 residents. And Douglas County veterans, while approximately 5% of the Douglas County population, represent 16% of the county suicides between 2004 and 2022. And whereas suicides, when declining in Douglas County from 2018 to 2020, increased in 2021 but decreased again in 2022, with 53 total deaths, with the highest number in the 45- to 64-age group, predominantly men. Whereas the Douglas Arapaho Suicide Prevention Alliance merged with the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative, DCMHI, in 2021, and the DCMHI subsequently published a roadmap for suicide prevention in Douglas County, outlining strategies and protective factors known to impact suicide risk. Whereas programs of the DCMHI, like the Community Response Team Co- responder Program, has responded to hundreds of calls for suicidal ideation since program inception in 2017, and through their response to crisis mental health calls, paired with follow-up and resource navigation, has saved lives. And whereas the DCMHI and the Douglas County Health Department are approaching suicide prevention as a joint venture and will work in alignment together with community partners. Whereas Douglas County Health Department identified injury prevention, including suicide-related injury and death, as a priority in its public health improvement plan. And whereas Douglas County Health Department created a goal of reducing suicide-related injury, morbidity, and mortality among all Douglas County residents by 2026 through the development of a suicide prevention work group in partnership with the DCMHI. And whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners has dedicated $9,060,0800 of the county's 68.2 American Rescue Plan Act funding to mental and behavioral health programming, $137,500 of which was designated for the 988 implementation in Colorado, and $1.5 million designated for suicide prevention programming in Douglas County. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners, the DCMHI, and the Douglas County Health Department encourage early identification and treatment, which can make a difference in successful management of mental health conditions and recovery, maintenance of mental well-being, and learning the symptoms of mental distress in order to get help when it's needed, engagement of every citizen and community, and ending the silence and stigma that surrounds suicide and mental health, and which discourages people from getting help, public education and civic activities which can encourage mental health through positive connection and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by suicide. Now where, be it resolved, that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 1 through September 30, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, to shine a light on mental health conditions and fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for access to care. Thank you.
Laura, thank you so much for that. Let me open it up to the Board of County Commissioners for any questions or comments.
Laura, this has been a long trip that you have been on, working with Barbara with the Douglas County Mental Health Initiative. And I could not be more proud of the work that this initiative has done. And it's because we can prove that you have all saved lives. I started learning about suicide prevention in 2004, when the State Health Department hired me for a grant they had just gotten from the CDC to reduce the number of suicides and homicides in the state of Colorado. And their reasoning was that a problem well-defined is half-solved. But if we don't know what is causing suicides and homicides, how can we reduce them? So I built that program. I knew how much money I had. I built that program, and we started collecting data from about 246 law enforcement agencies in the state of Colorado. Chief Duffy used to get a call from me, maybe once every two or three months, and he would have reports ready for me, and that's how I would get the reports from Douglas County. So that journey led me to run for county coroner. And as the coroner, I can't tell you what it is like to sit in the family, in the kitchen or the family room, with someone who has just lost a loved one to a suicide. How do you explain that? And then we had this case, the Sheriff's Office will remember this well, in Highlands Ranch with a young man whose mother had been working with the county attorney to get him help because he was mentally ill. And he slipped through the cracks. He was able to get a hold of his mother's firearm, and he took her life and then his own. After that, Douglas County said, this is never going to happen in this community again. And then when I became the Commissioner in 2017, I was amazed to see the work that Barbara Drake and her team had put together. And in May of 2017, the very first Community Response Team was launched. And when you look at these numbers that Laura read, that the suicide numbers dropped significantly in this county, it is because of the Community Response Team. You all are saving lives. And then as a Commissioner, to have dedicated over $9 million to mental health and behavioral health services in this county, we are making a difference. We are the leaders, not only in this state, but in this country, on how counties can figure out how to leave this complicated mental health system behind and develop our own so we can help families, we can help people. And I am just so thrilled that so many of you are here, and you are improving the lives of people who have mental illness through no fault of their own. And so it is truly an honor for me to be able to hear this resolution and to see the army of people in this county who are making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Thomas, and thank you for your leadership all these years in the field of mental health. We greatly appreciate that. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. You know, my colleague just spoke about mental illness and the effects that we see on suicides here in the county. I would like to take a moment to jump onto my soapbox, though, to have perhaps a contrarian comment, and it pertains to suicide among military veterans. I look around the room right now, and I actually see several of my brothers and sisters, military veterans, who are now live and work here in the county. And I'm motivated to speak on this subject by something said by General H.R. McMaster in a podcast last week, where he took to task the concept that we have, that our veterans in our nation are these fragile human beings, are these fragile members of our society who live crisis to crisis. And there is no doubt that there are those, our brothers and sister veterans, who are having a tough time. But it's not mental illness. It's mental injury. The modern battlefield is a place that the American psyche does not find a home in. It's a place that causes injuries to the human psyche, as it causes injuries to the human body. And so when we do talk about our veterans, and we do talk about how they have fallen to suicide, I would always remind everyone, these are not fragile individuals. These were individuals that were oftentimes chosen for their strength, for their resolve. And their bodies may have been healthy when they came off the battlefield, but their minds were injured. And so I very much do appreciate, despite my comments, the work that we are doing here in the county to care for these, our brothers and sister veterans, whom had experiences very different from my own, I freely admit, and who do fall to suicide due to the injuries that we cannot actually see. So I'm very much in favor of this resolution, and I commend the work by our staff here at Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal, and thank you for your service on behalf of veterans in this community. I'll echo those sentiments with just incredibly high praise for Laura Sincony, Barbara Drake, and the entire Mental Health Initiative, which has not only been locally profound in terms of impact, but throughout the entire region and state. You have led the way in mental health and have unquestionably saved lives. I'm very proud to serve with both of my colleagues here, who have almost unanimously supported the work of the Mental Health Initiative for as long as I have been here. You know, it's interesting. When I first started, they said, Commissioner, list off the things you want to get done in your four years, or maybe eight, if you're blessed enough to have that opportunity. And I probably had 40 things that I wanted to do with a lot of energy and enthusiasm. And many of those have occurred through a lot of great collaboration with staff and our county manager. But maybe two or three on that list was a three-digit mental health line. And I remember being told very clearly, well, that's not a county function. That's not something that counties do. But I was so pleased that a United States Senator from Colorado was passionate about that project, that being able to go to the White House and address that issue with many others who were also thinking of the same thing, got 988 signed into law. And then to have that companion legislation in Colorado, and then to be able to serve with a statewide group that really allowed 988 to roll out well, is so exciting for me. I know a lot of people, so this will probably seem like a surprising statistic, but it's because I know so many that this occurred in my life. But during COVID, I lost five people in my sphere to suicide, and all of them were men between the ages of 33 and 55. And I don't know what each one of those men were personally struggling with, but I do know that having a dedicated three-digit line that anybody can have top-of-line to call is significant. Having a co-response team is deeply significant. We have so many co-responders here that I'm deeply proud to be in partnership with. One of my first experiences as a Commissioner was going out on a call. I was in the back of a co-response vehicle with law enforcement and a social services individual, a clinician, and we were called out to Parker. And there was a young man that was about to drink himself to death because he had just come out of the closet, and his dad had called services on him. And of course, the co-response team went out. And I was sitting in the back of that vehicle, and I thought, well, I'm a Commissioner. I don't have expertise in this area. I'll just sit back. And they said, no, no, you're coming up with us. And I got to experience firsthand the dynamic and powerful work of co-response, to see that clinician engage in such a compassionate way, but then to also have law enforcement there to make sure that if things went awry, there would certainly be that presence to protect everyone involved. And to see that individual diverted to care instead of something more like an emergency room, or maybe a county jail for whatever was going on, was really powerful. So I've seen from firsthand experience how amazing the Mental Health Initiative has been, and I'm deeply supportive of this resolution today. So thank you. With that, let me open it up for any additional public comment on this particular proclamation. Is there any other citizen comment on this proclamation? Yes?
I have three minutes, and I'm watching the clock.
And I'll start. First of all, I called the hospital, I called the police officers five times while I was in UC Highlands Ranch Hospital. I was very, very sick. I got money stolen from my house, and I was paralyzed. I had a neck injury, a car accident, three weeks after I moved to Highlands Ranch. And then I went to my church up on, I'm sorry, I can hardly speak it. I've not seen my daughter for two years. I took care of her, gave birth to her, took care of her. She was intubated a year at Children's Hospital. And I took care of her for four years in Ireland, while I raised a son who is in the military with his wife, top U.S. pilot, trainer, fighter. Good kids. I gave my life to her. Oxygen, 24 inches, heart, you get it. Intensive care, a year, trach, I mean, intubated, not trach. And then scoliosis at 10. And I stood by my daughter until 22 years, while my husband had an international career at 25 years old, Latin America. And I gave up everything I loved. I spoke Chinese, I studied, I was a writer, I played soccer in China. I was one of the best athletes in the state of Colorado for soccer. I traveled. I trained at the Olympic Chinese Center. I gave it up for my children. I come to Highlands Ranch on handcuffed, three weeks after I get by deputy sheriff's police officers, and I forgive them. Blocked my car, and it wasn't the sheriff. They were doing their job, I'm sure, but not very nicely. I'm a woman. I'm a kind woman who served on the streets. And I would add the $700,000 to the $9 million. And the $4 million I've spent in the mental health, and I give you the money, I published a book about mental health. We are not mentally ill. The world is mentally ill, and we have to fit into it. I'd rather float popsicles than look at your gray guns. I'd rather give you colorful balloons to play with your children. Then I'd never shoot a man. I'd never kill my brother. And I'm passionate about this because I saw on the streets, I served a man, Scott, he's in Wyoming now, in a rehab alcoholic. I stood by him. A month, I found him home, and I paid upfront for him, my own money, because I believe in each other. And we're sick. We are all sick, but we're all well. And there's the day you're sick and the day I'm not. And thank God, we can give hands to one another. Quit calling each other mentally ill through this. I lost a husband after 27 years from a surgery at Styrage that has cost a million. I had shock treatment after 30 pills a day prescribed by doctors who said I was mentally ill. The psychiatry is ripping the nation of our dignity with opiates, and you say we have a problem at the border? We have a problem in our hospitals, in our psych units, in our gods that are telling our children on plastic Zoom who they are and who they aren't. If you want your children to live through this era of total destruction, take the drugs out of the hands of the doctors that are killing our children.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments and sharing your experiences with us. Additional citizen comment?
And that's not the only police officer.
So ma'am, I'm going to ask for any additional citizen comment?
I'm passionate about this, and I care.
Okay, with that, I'll ask if there's any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any other discussion or a motion.
If it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. With that, we'll move on to the second item for ceremonies and proclamations, item B, which is a resolution proclaiming September 18, 2023 through September 24, 2023, as Douglas County Co- Responders Week. And we have Maggie Cooper presenting for staff. Hi, Maggie.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Maggie Cooper, for staff. I would like to mention that I'm fortunate enough to be joined by many of our co-responder teams and command staff partners in the audience today. Today, I'm here to present a resolution for your consideration and approval to proclaim September 18 through September 24 as Douglas County Co- Responder Teams Week. Whereas Douglas County, along with the state of Colorado and the nation, have continued to address the issue of mental illness and substance use disorder due to the large number of people affected directly and indirectly when these issues are not addressed. And whereas nearly 1 in 5 citizens of Douglas County and nationally currently deal with a certain level of mental illness or will in their lifetime. And whereas mental illness, substance use disorder, and co-occurring conditions often lead to homelessness, criminal charges and arrests, as well as expensive and less effective incarceration, use of emergency departments, families in crisis, suicide, and violent crime. And whereas the many issues created by mental illness, substance use disorder, and addiction are community problems and not just a problem for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services. And whereas many communities, towns, cities, counties, and states have realized the need for a more specialized response to address these issues, and specifically when people are experiencing crisis situations. And whereas many of our first responders, along with the county, have identified an evidence-based and effective program called co-response. And whereas co-response is defined as pairing a crisis-trained mental health clinician or navigator with a first responder, such as a deputy sheriff, police officer, or fire EMS professional, who respond as a team to intervene during crises. The goal is to divert individuals from jail and emergency rooms and connect those in crisis or facing homelessness with necessary and effective resources to address mental health, substance use disorder, housing, food, and other basic needs. And whereas, beginning in 2017 with one team and continuing today, Douglas County, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Castle Rock Police Department, Lone Tree Police Department, Parker Police Department, Carrying Communities of Colorado, Castle Rock Fire and Rescue, South Metro Fire and Rescue, and the Douglas County School District have partnered to create the Community Response Teams, a co-responder program comprised of specially selected and trained deputies, officers, clinicians, resource specialists, and EMS professionals. And whereas the Community Response Teams have responded to over 10,000 emergency and non-emergency calls for service, representing over 7,500 individuals, and have provided crisis intervention, developed safety plans, conducted important follow-up, and helped countless people get connected with the resources they desperately need. And whereas the Douglas County Homeless Engagement Assistance and Resource Team, known as HEART, was created to provide a specialized co-response for individuals experiencing homelessness by pairing navigators with local law enforcement, and in 2023 have received 633 referrals and provided ongoing case management services to 89 individuals. And whereas the Community Response Teams and HEART teams have shown exceptional commitment, dedication, leadership, and passion to help those in need, and have reinforced how vital their work is to the communities of Douglas County. And whereas the work of CRT and HEART would not be possible without the continuing support of the county commissioners, all law enforcement entities in the county, municipal partners, human services, faith partners, and a host of other community resource partners. Now wherefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of September 18 to September 24, 2023, as Douglas County Co- Responder Teams Week, along with Colorado and national co-responder alliances, to express our appreciation and gratitude for all co-responders that serve those experiencing a mental health crisis or homelessness. We recognize the significant contributions of the members of the Community Response and HEART teams as dedicated first responders who routinely respond to nonroutine and sometimes dangerous situations involving persons in crisis who work together to intervene and ensure the best possible outcomes. As the Board of County Commissioners, we call upon Douglas County residents and public and private institutions and organizations to recognize, honor, and give thanks to these amazing professionals for their daily sacrifice, public service, and commitment to a safer community through the great work that they do to assist those in need. Thank you.
Maggie, thank you for that. Any comments or questions for staff?
Yes, I'd like to thank Maggie, as well as watching Laura Sincony grow and develop in these positions over the years. Maggie, you've done the same. Leandra, would you stand up? You know, Leandra is the glue that pulls all of these Community Response Teams together and makes sure that people continue to get the help they need. So, Leandra, sometimes you get left out in this discussion. So thank you for standing up so people know who you are. Thank you. You know, these Community Response Teams, again, have saved lives, and they have improved the quality of lives. When I have ridden with a couple of these teams, I have been amazed at when they walk into a situation that you can feel the static in the air. And after just being there a short period of time, there is a level of calmness, and you can feel the relief in the people in the room, not only the individual who's dealing with the mental illness situation, but that support team around them, their loved ones. And there is no way that we can measure the impact that these teams are having our community. I know Barbara and her team put together a figure that shows, I think we've saved $9 million in emergency room saves and jail transports. But that's just that piece. There's no way that we can measure the help to the human spirit that these teams have brought. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. I drove through the streets of Castle Rock, getting pure to the office a little fast the other day. So I was a little worried when I saw Jack Colley come, in case, you know, I got caught on camera driving too fast. But I'm actually really glad you're here, Jack, because I get to tell a story that I've told several times. But I don't know if I've ever told it in front of you. And if you remember, Jack, back to 2015, you pitched a co-responder program on the Castle Rock Police Department to the members of Town Council, which I was honored to serve on at the time. And, Jack, I think that was one of the few times I walked out of your office saying, no. I didn't buy it. I didn't see it. I didn't see how it was going to benefit us. I thought it was going to be time wasted, money wasted, and the efforts of your officers wasted. And luckily, you were able to get, I think, six other votes. And luckily, you were able to get, I think, six other votes to vote yes. And you showed me, and all of us here in Castle Rock, over the course of the next few months and few years, that I was actually wrong. And that there was value in the co-responder program in Castle Rock. And then of course, once again, it was my honor and privilege to be elected by the people of Douglas County to this seat, and I got to see all the work that Maggie, you and the team, and all you guys have been doing here across the county, to do exactly the numbers that my colleague quoted of taking people who needed help and not forcing them through the criminal justice system, but helping them get the help they needed. So first and foremost, you know, we're going to read a resolution here in a moment, or we're going to pass a resolution here at the moment, but I for one have joined my colleague in thanking everyone and the work you've done. But Jack, thanks for doing that good work here in Castle Rock. Thanks for proving to me when I was wrong, and it worked for the people of Castle Rock. So good job, Jack Colley, good job Maggie, good job everyone.
Thank you Commissioner Teal. Co-Response works. It just works. I mean, when you think about the number of diversions from county jail, from emergency rooms, the savings for our DA's budget and for the sheriff's office, it is not only a great investment for our county, but it is truly saving lives. And I can't tell you how much we are appreciative of you and the entire group here today. I am particularly pleased of our newest co-response team, our Homeless Engagement Assistance Resource Team. And would you, the three of you stand please? Actually, the six of you, since we're talking co-response, I don't know if all six are here. But you know, when I, I thought about starting the homeless initiative several years ago, never did I think that today I would have the honor of being before such amazing individuals that have had the success that you have had. I don't think it's just Co-Response Week, it should be Co-Response Year. We're one of only two counties in the entire state that has seen an overall reduction in homelessness. And that's because you are out there on the ground every day engaging with citizens that are in need of services and working well with law enforcement and your team to ensure that you're accomplishing the goals of the homeless initiative. So I couldn't be more proud of the three of you. I know the county couldn't be more proud of the three of you. You know, the punishment for doing really well is getting more work. So I think part of my goal and our goal as a, as a team here is to make sure that we add to your teams so that it's not just three, but five. And that that coverage goes from not just, you know, certain hours during the day, but 24/7. So thank you. If you want to be seated, I also want to commend our, our new Douglas County Sheriff, Darren Weekly and his leadership. Without his role in all of this, good things would not have occurred. And just one specific example, we asked that there be no drop calls when people called the HEART team, because we have 66 signs deployed throughout the entire county saying, "Call the HEART team." Worst thing that could happen is it just rolls over to voicemail. And I think it was less than a couple of days that Sheriff Weekly had that modified so that anybody calling that HEART team number would immediately, it would roll over to dispatch. So huge thanks to Sheriff Weekly and his team. I think at this point, if you are a member of law enforcement or on a co-response team, can you stand and be recognized?
Thank you so much for being here. With that, let me open it up for any other comment from the room, any citizens that are here to make comment on this particular proclamation today. Any citizen comment? Barbara Drake, one of our favorite citizens, also our deputy county manager.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Barbara Drake for staff. I wasn't going to speak, but you know, I can't help myself, so. I just want to say that this would not be possible without the, the leadership of the county commissioners supporting it all these years, without the leadership of all of our law enforcement partners that are here, sheriff and chiefs of police from all of our jurisdictions. We are one of the only programs that covers all jurisdictions in, in our county, and we work cooperatively together and have two youth teams that go into the schools, work with the school resource officers, and have addressed countless issues of young people in our schools, also to keep them out of the juvenile justice system. This all started back when, I have to give credit to Chief Duffy and others in the room. We're sitting around the table at the Castle Rock Fire Department, Rich Martin was there, and we decided we were going to go visit Colorado Springs. And I wound up in the back of a, crawling into the far back seat of a minivan so that we could take an individual to Cedar Springs Hospital that the co-responder team down there was out on a call. And I thought, this is how it's supposed to work. We're headed to Cedar Springs. We're not headed to jail, we're not headed to the emergency department. And we came back and figured out how to customize it to meet our community and what our needs were in this community. So I just want to say that co-response, as you all have talked about, is no longer an initiative. Co-response is a fundamental way that we provide services to individuals in need, mental health, substance abuse, and homelessness in our community. And I feel like there's no going back now. This is the way we do business. And then I would just like to also say that I appreciate the recognition that you give me and the folks that are part of the mental health initiative, but I am the one who is honored to be in the presence of these everyday heroes. And it is my absolute privilege to be able to work with all of them. They are the true heroes of what we're doing in our community to address mental health issues. So thank you for your support, and thank you to all of you that are out there doing this every day. 10,000 calls, and we're not done yet. Thank you.
Barbara Drake, thank you so much. And it wouldn't be possible without you asking in your vision, and very true about Chief Duffy as well. Thank you sir for your, your heart for this community. Any other citizen comment in the room? Yes ma'am?
I know it took my three minutes, but I have been in the mental health system, yes. We can applaud the front line, great, look at these dignified men. But the second line and the third line and the fourth line, pretty tough to deal with. So I've been dragged naked in mental health hospitals, I've been raped, I've been abused with injections, eight men holding you down. You don't have rights in there, it's better to be in prison than our mental health system. So I'll be honest, if you want to know, if you want to know what it's like, barred. You're in prison until they let you out. They drug you, it's, it's worse than the prisons, I think you have a right in jail. I'd rather go to jail, I think, with the men than the low scums in our mental health system. And I'm talking Mental Health Aurora, Porter's Hospital, and we can praise our, well, all we want, good initiative, it is a good initiative, but back it up by good people in the place we're going to. I won't go to a hospital, I won't go to a UC Highlands Ranch anymore, and I won't go to Porter's, and I won't go to, if you walk in there and live it, they're hellholes now. They were hellholes when I was 15 or 21, after I paralyzed my leg and came home, and they put me on lithium, both kids on ventilators, cardiac arrest, 17 months combined, both kids are great. But you go in there, break in prisoners, break in with your badges and see the truth, but they'll hide it from you. They'll lie. And I have all the documents from UC Health Highlands Ranch. It's a lack of control, and it's a lack of money, and it's a tiredness in those hospitals. It's a salary of $8 after tax money, and our government, we pay money to the government, they support our hospitals, our insurance companies, and we pay again. And we're financially free because we didn't have vacations, we paid our dues to the mental health hospital over $4 million already, maybe more. Jake Cutnick, Porter's Hospital, four times the insurance, he can do anything he wants. You watch who you praise. You can praise these men and these women for the initiative, but we won't praise you when we end up where you put us for your initiatives. So back it up, back up the scums on the earth.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Any additional citizen comment in the room?
That would be your next initiative, police officers?
And then any citizen comment online?
Places you put us in for health.
Any additional citizen comment? With that, I'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
It's my honor to make a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming September 18th, 2023 until September 24th, 2023 as Douglas County Co-Responders Week.
Happy to second.
So we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Thank you very much Maggie, and thank you everyone for being here with us today.
Can we get a photograph?
Absolutely, yes. I'll leave that to our esteemed Drew here in the camera, he'll direct us where to go.
Your newest member?
Oh, we're even in process. Where are you at?
Your newest member there?
Can we get you on the ship this way?
Come on you guys, you really need some chairs.
We actually get, 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 we
I do have a motion to approve the requests in all items C through A D on the consent agenda. Items A and B and P, as in Papa, have been pulled from the agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So with that, we'll move on to our regular agenda items for today. And the first one is item four, I'm sorry, 3A, which is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Parker regarding cost sharing for the construction of the Dransfeld Road Extension Project. Douglas County Project Number CI 2017-023. Our Griffith presenting for staff. Art?
Thank you, Art Griffith for staff. Commissioner, would we want to entertain public comment now for that item? I believe somebody has come to speak on my item, public comment.
You want to have public comment before you do your presentation?
It's up to you. I just, either way.
Oh, okay. You know what? I think normally we have staff do a presentation, as you know, so I think we'll proceed that way unless there's a real desire to go out of order.
No, thank you.
Okay.
So welcome this item before you. An intergovernmental agreement regarding the construction of the Dransfeld Road Construction Project. We had previously partnered with the town of Parker during the design phase. This project extends Dransfeld Road from the 20-mile intersection across Cherry Creek to connect with Matzenbacher. The project limits are depicted in Exhibit A of the proposed IGA. This project is a benefit to the regional transportation network. It'll improve the reliability of the network. It'll help reduce trip times and out-of-direction travel and help reduce congestion in the years to come. The construction project is kind of broken into two phases. One is channel improvements of Cherry Creek, which are estimated to cost around $7 million. And the road extension project that I just described estimated across around $22 million for a total cost of $29 million. Per the proposed IGA, the county's contribution is estimated fixed at an $8 million contribution. It's been identified in our five-year capital improvement program list of priority projects, and the county contribution represents about 28% of the project cost. The town plans to bid the project the fall of 2023 and begin construction in early '24. So be glad to answer any questions regarding this intergovernmental agreement regarding the cost sharing for the Dransfeld Road project.
Great, thank you, Art. Any questions for staff?
Art, this project has been going on for a long time. Is this what's known as the Pope property, just on the south side of 20-mile that Mr. Smith is on?
It does cross through a portion of his property, yes.
That is the one we're talking about here.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions. I know you've been working on this for a long time, so thank you for getting it to this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, in a way, this is a project that I knew about even when I was still serving on the Castle Rock Council, just due to the fact that this has been a project that keeps coming up when we would meet as a subregional board with Dr. Cog. You know, a lot of credit needs to be given to our partners and colleagues in Parker because they would participate with us on regional transportation projects, and all the while, they're talking about the fact that they're not eligible for a lot of that funding. And so this project kept coming up as a means of equity, a means of, you know, making sure that we don't have a place here in the county of haves and have-nots. And Parker, unfortunately, when it comes to so much federal funding, did keep coming up on the have-not scale. So again, this is one that I have long associated with, just like my colleague mentioned, and I think I've had the long version of this one, so I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal, and I have no questions either. Art, thank you. You always do such a tremendous job with these massive transportation projects and getting dollars to Douglas County and buttoning them up, so thank you for all you do. At this point, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Yes, sir. If you want to just state your name and where you're from for the record, please.
Commissioners, my name is Mike Smith, and we own the property where the road extension is planned on going through. And like has been referred, we've been at this a long time. We first started talking about this road extension in 2007. Okay, so that's 15 years or better. And this last round of negotiations to get all the moving parts, there's hundreds of moving parts to this, because we're in the county, we got an annex into the town so the town can build the road, and floodplain issues and the channel work and everything. We've been at this for five and a half years, just this last round of negotiations, and we've all come to an agreement on it now, so it's time to get the road built, you know? We're happy with it going through the farm, and it's going to add a lot of benefit to moving traffic through Parker and through the more, through the retail area of Parker to boost that up a little bit and cut down on congestion in the retail area. So we're all in favor of it, so I want to thank you guys for being here and supporting the project.
Mr. Smith, thank you, and thank you for being with us today. Any additional citizen comment?
I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Smith. He's been a good friend for a long time.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Any citizen comment online with regard to this item?
Troy, I'm not hearing anything from you, so I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion. I have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Parker regarding cost sharing for the construction of the Dransfeld Road Extension Project. Douglas County Project Number CI 2017-023. Mr. Smith, I know a little something about taking time to build road projects, as Mr. Griffith can attest, so thank you for the work. Thank you for the patience. Aye, second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to item 4B, which is a resolution to participate in Proposition 123 funding. And we have, it looks like Melody DeHalecourt presenting for staff. Melody?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melody DeHalecourt, representing Community Development. Request before you today is to adopt a resolution to participate in Proposition 123 funding. Colorado voters approved Proposition 123 in November of 2022. The proposition is meant to increase the production of affordable housing units and supports homeless services. The initiative directs 0.1% of Colorado's income tax revenue to programs that include helping essential workers such as first responders, teachers, and nurses buy homes. It is estimated that Proposition 123 will create 170,000 houses and rental units over the next two decades throughout the state. Proposition 123 offers financial support to local governments to increase affordable housing stock by 3% each year for a total 9% increase over the next three years. Proposition 123 created the State Affordable Housing Fund, dedicating 40% to an Affordable Housing Support Fund and 60% to the Affordable Housing Financing Fund. Each applicant to Proposition 123 is required to establish a baseline of affordable housing units. The American Community Survey from 2017 to 2021 was utilized to determine and establish the baseline of 4,820 affordable for-sale homes and rental units within Douglas County. The county's commitment to develop 9% of affordable housing units within unincorporated Douglas County would be 434 units over the next three years. Failure to achieve the 9% increase would increase, excuse me, would result in the county being ineligible for funding for one year beginning in 2026. The county will commit to working with participating local municipalities through the Douglas County Housing Partnership to strategically use the funding and allocate development credit to each participating municipality. These possible municipalities include Town of Castle Rock, City of Castle Pines, Town of Larkspur, City of Lone Tree, and Town of Parker. Commitments from each local government are due to the Division of Housing by November 1st, 2023, to be eligible to apply for the next three years of Proposition 123 funding. It is staff's recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution to participate in Proposition 123 funding by establishing a baseline number of affordable housing units, committing to increasing the number of affordable housing units by 9% over the next three years, and working in collaboration with the Douglas County Housing Partnership and participating local municipalities. We have guest Maria Chiano, Executive Director of Douglas County Housing Partnership here today. We are all available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
Great, Melody, thank you so much. And Maria, thank you for being here. Did you have any additional comments for us?
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here to present again today, and thank you to staff. Proposition 123 is an amazing opportunity for us to work together through our member jurisdictions to make more affordable housing, do land banking, and so many other things that we've talked about before. So I just want to thank you all for entertaining this and for everyone's hard work here, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you so much, Maria. Any questions for staff or for the housing authority?
I have no questions.
Okay. Not seeing any questions. Maybe just a comment or two. I, you know, I am a little dangerous because I was a poli sci major but a double minor in Spanish and economics, and sometimes that economics minor rears its ugly head, but I always bristle a little bit when government monkeys around in the free market, and I think there are some real dangers to our economy when layfolk such as ourselves get too involved in the economy. But no doubt, we've heard statewide and throughout the country, the need for affordable housing, understand that. I would say, for me as one commissioner, and I hope my colleagues would join me in this, that our greatest concern is for workforce housing. It's for those essential workers that are serving our communities every day, whether it's, you know, our first responders, many of whom were here in this audience not too long ago, and many of which may or may not be able to afford housing in Douglas County. That's really significant to me. Our hospital and healthcare workers, our teachers, those that are contributing on a daily basis to serve our community, ensuring that they can live and work in Douglas County is not only a benefit for them, but it also is a traffic solution. It encourages mobility and reduces congestion on our major thoroughfare. So I like the concept of workforce housing, and I hope that we can continue to talk and partner around ways that we can develop workforce housing through Prop 123 into the future. And I don't know if you have any additional comments on that, Maria?
Yes, workforce housing is a priority for the Housing Partnership and for all of the member jurisdictions that Melody mentioned. Workforce housing, housing for vulnerable populations, including our older adults. So those are the areas that we're hearing that we really have a shortage, that the community wants us to address. So we are, those are our main focal points in terms of creating additional housing and doing development. Of course, also, the down payment assistance program through Proposition 123 allows us to reach a higher income level, which will revitalize the program and, I think, meet some of the needs of the workforce population that you just described. So right there with you in that.
Well, I'm with you, too, and I'm glad you mentioned our seniors because that's really a significant area of focus for the county through Commissioner Teal's leadership and many others. Any additional questions or comments for staff or for Maria? Okay, with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
You know, Chair, you spoke of your concerns about Prop 123 in terms of, you know, where your formal education was, and I, too, was a poli sci minor. I, and I'm of two minds on this. I actually did not vote for Prop 123. I voted against it as a person, and I still have grave concerns about the, being able to fill the promises made to the voters of Colorado and its success. What, but I, like I said, I'm of two minds today, particularly in terms of this resolution here in Douglas County. I actually have great faith in my sister veteran, Maria Chiano. I know that she's taken a hard look at this with her team, and quite frankly, we know the goal that we saw there of 400-some units that will be built. Quite frankly, they're probably going to get built due to the free market anyhow, and so we're going to be in a very good position here in Douglas County because the free market is actually going to help us be in compliance with the requirements of this proposition. Which then brings me to the other side of where I am in terms of this resolution. I can see how this can be used to make very positive changes here in Douglas County, and I really appreciate Maria bringing up the fact that, yes, it is workforce housing, workforce housing that we're going to be able to work on, Chair, but also housing for our senior adults, folks who've actually, you know, we're in the middle of an older adult services initiative right now, and when we talk to people, you know, they haven't come here recently usually. They've lived here their, almost their entire adult lives. They've, they're not coming here to be older adults. They're adults that have lived here and, just like the rest of us, got older. And I think, I feel I am going to vote in favor of this resolution because actually it is the faith I have here in Douglas County and the good people that we have working on this in Douglas County that will make this successful. So if it pleased the board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution to participate in Proposition 123 funding.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. So with that, we'll move on to other business. Any other business today for the board or county manager? Any other business? Moving on to our county manager and the county manager report. Doug, anything? Okay. Happy birthday tomorrow. I was reminded it's officially tomorrow, so we got to honor birthday week. And then any commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments?
No, sir.
And I'm sorry, but you know what? I'm going to pop back up to citizen comment and make sure that we hit that. So citizen comments, organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, you will have up to three minutes, and then we'll conclude with some commissioner comments, if any. So let me ask if there's any citizen comment in the room. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Angela Thomas. I'm a resident here in Douglas County. I want to remind you about a, an incident that occurred on August 26th at the Douglas County Fairgrounds. A group of somewhere between 60 and 100 anti-LGBTQ extremists disrupted the Family Friendly Pride Fest 2023 at the Douglas County Fairgrounds. Yet another outward sign of the anti-LGBTQ sentiment sweeping the community, state, and country. This local group, referred to by Commissioner Teal as a well-regulated militia, is now trying to distance themselves and lying about their role in this, in the organization of this event. This is not an isolated incident. Currently, there are several Douglas County right-wing organizations that espouse hateful ideologies in an attempt to divide the community and force their narrow-minded perspectives on the rest of us. Their ugly rhetoric and actions show too frequently and have spread to our local institutions and government. The Castle Rock Police Department and Douglas County Sheriff's Office are well aware of who the ringleaders were for the unlawful disruption of a lawful event for over 40 minutes. This would not be tolerated in a movie theater or at a Shakespeare festival. So why do they tolerate that behavior for a pride fest, except for the fact that the sheriff is close buddies with Graham and the ringleaders? They did the right thing by not letting it escalate during the event, but now, why should they not issue citations to the known offenders under Colorado Revised Statute 189108, disrupting a lawful meeting or assembly, given the massive amount of evidence in terms of witnesses, video, and admissions? 189108 states, "A person commits disrupting lawful assembly if intending to prevent or disrupt any lawful meeting, procession, or gathering, he significantly obstructs or interferes with the meeting, procession, or gathering by physical action, verbal utterance, or any other means. Disrupting lawful assembly is a petty offense, except that if the actor knows the meeting, procession, or gathering is a funeral, it is a Class II misdemeanor." No one has been cited in that event. If I were to have gone to Castle Rock Day of Prayer with 70 of my fellow folk and stood in front of the audience while the presentations were going on, I doubt it would have been tolerated, and I would have been escorted away very quickly. I don't understand why this didn't happen for this event. I stand with the Pride Fest organizers in welcoming and supporting everyone to come as they are, embrace their true selves, and feel love and acceptance. I will continue to stand with all Americans regardless of differences to protect the interests of everyone, and I, just a reminder that next week is Constitution Week.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a question for you.
If you want to just state your name and where you're from.
My name's Kathy Lees. I'm from Douglas County, 30-year resident. Someone had to leave because they had to pick up their kids because this meeting went over. Can I read her comment as well?
Well, you have a total of three minutes to do whatever you'd like.
Okay, then we'll have to submit that online. All right, good evening, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Lees. I'm a 30-year resident of Douglas County. In the summer of 2018, I occupied a government space to protest the harming of children. I was removed from that space, arrested, and charged with crowding, obstructing, and incommoting. Our country has a long history of civil disobedience from the Boston Tea Party to the civil rights movements. It is how we fight injustice in America. What we saw on Douglas County Fairgrounds on the 26th of August was not civil disobedience. It was not civil disobedience because a critical component is the fidelity of rule of law and a willingness to accept the legal consequences of actions. It was clear by those of us present that the protesters believed they were above the law and would not experience any legal consequences for disrupting lawful assembly. This wasn't bravery, it was bullying. The intent was to terrorize those present into conforming into a specific worldview. Pride Fest worked tirelessly with all levels of government to make this event lawful and safe, including safety plan that Pride Fest, the county, and DCSO agreed to prior to the event. The day of the event, the county and DCSO refused to follow that safety plan. Commissioner Layden and the county lawyer overruled the policy to limit access to the children area. Extremist groups showed up on county property, shouting "See Hile." Two known neo-Nazis with violent arrest records walked the parking lot, filming license plate, and harassed people, including Councilwoman Cavey. Then we had over 60 men disrupt a drag show for over 40 minutes, and law enforcement refused to follow through on the agreed-upon safety plan to remove protesters. Jimmy Graham, one of the protesters, commented during the livestream of the event, "DCSO and CRPD, we awesome." Clearly, he felt he had law enforcement on his side. Since the 26th, Mr. Graham has gone on TV declaring that his intention is to work alongside but not under the authority of law enforcement because he would have more latitude and capability without law enforcement's constraints. This man and his followers believe they are above the law. It is clear that law enforcement in Douglas County has no desire to hold them accountably. Apparently, rule of law is not applying in Douglas County. Commissioners, you are responsible under state statutes for the health, safety, and welfare of citizens, including law enforcement. Now we know extremist groups like Patriot Front or Proud Boys are actively showing up in Douglas County. Mr. Graham, goal of having a vigilante group or armed militia that works outside law enforcement should concern all lying, biting citizens in the community. Commissioners, I request that you provide an impartial investigator into extremist groups in Douglas County, report back to the community on how we can ensure that law enforcement is not working with these extremist groups. event. The day of the event, the county and DCSO refused to follow that safety plan. Commissioner Layden and the county lawyer overruled the policy to limit access to the children area. Extremist groups showed up on county property, shouting "See Hile." Two known neo-Nazis with violent arrest records walked the parking lot, filming license plate, and harassed people, including Councilwoman Cavey. Then we had over 60 men disrupt a drag show for over 40 minutes, and law enforcement refused to follow through on the agreed-upon safety plan to remove protesters. Jimmy Graham, one of the protesters, commented during the live stream of the event, "DCSO and CRPD, we awesome." Clearly, he felt he had law enforcement on his side. Since the 26th, Mr. Graham has gone on TV declaring that his intention is to work alongside, but not under the authority of law enforcement because he would have more latitude and capability without law enforcement's constraints. This man and his followers believe they are above the law. It is clear that law enforcement in Douglas County has no desire to hold them accountably. Apparently, rule of law is not applying in Douglas County. Commissioners, you are responsible under state statutes for the health, safety, and welfare of citizens, including law enforcement. Now we know extremist groups like Patriot Front or Proud Boys are actively showing up in Douglas County. Mr. Graham, the goal of having a vigilante group or armed militia that works outside of law enforcement should concern all lying, biting citizens in the community. Commissioners, I request that you provide an impartial investigator into extremist groups in Douglas County, report back to the community on how we can ensure that law enforcement is not working with these extremist groups. We have a right to know, learn why these groups were allowed to terrorize our community without repercussions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
I have three packets for you.
I'm sorry?
I have three packets.
Oh, sure. If you want to just approach our county attorney, he can label those as an exhibit.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Parrish. I reside in Highlands Ranch on Dutch Creek Street. Time is limited, so I'm going to get straight to the point. I'm here today representing the neighborhood of Montage, including residents residing on Dutch Creek Street. We are extremely concerned with the volume of traffic currently being redirected through Dutch Creek Street due to construction efforts on the corner of Quebec and Lincoln. Goal 7-2C of the transportation plan states, "Design local roads to serve the purpose and scale of a neighborhood." The Montage neighborhood is small, and its streets were never envisioned to serve as a major arterial bypass. They were always to be local streets. This was an issue caused during the construction in 2012 and is an even larger issue now with the increased population and volume of commuters. As evidenced by the letter in your hands on pages 2 through 6, this concern was raised and resolved by erecting a temporary barrier for the duration of the construction project and was widely accepted and praised as an effective safety control for the Montage neighborhood. On page 6, you will see photos from August 2012 with the barriers and signs. A similar problem existed in the neighborhood directly north of the Highlands Ranch High School. A gate was erected on Aberdeen Way to prevent the use of that street as an arterial bypass. This solution has been in place for over 10 years and has proven extremely effective. The current right-in, right-out signage and barriers are ineffective and instead are encouraging drivers to cut through our previously quiet and safe neighborhood. These barriers and signs must be taken down immediately. They are not a viable solution and have worsened the congestion and speeding problems through Montage. The speed detection signs are also poorly placed and should be positioned on the other half of Dutch Creek Street if the intent is to detect speeding vehicles. In your folder, you will find images from August and September showing the extreme traffic and congestion present with the current signage. We are requesting that a temporary barrier is erected at the south entrance of Dutch Creek Street to restrict incoming traffic and allow the residents and children of Montage to safely enjoy our once peaceful neighborhood again. To be perfectly clear, this is a temporary solution while the construction project at the major intersection ensues. Myself and other residents of Montage have spoken with the county public works, the sheriff's department, and Highlands Ranch Fire Department. All parties have agreed that the barrier would be the most effective deterrent for cut-through traffic and would not hinder emergency service vehicles from reaching the neighborhood in the most expedient manner possible. The repeated changes to the traffic, traffic pattern plans, including the removal of the concrete barrier and the subsequent replacement of the traffic signs and orange barrels, is not a fiscally responsible use of our taxes. It has also not solved the public safety issue for our neighborhood. A proven and inexpensive solution is to block incoming traffic into the neighborhood at the south entrance of Dutch Creek Street with a concrete or metal barrier. Thank you for hearing the concerns of your constituents. We implore you to expeditiously, expeditiously correct this serious safety issue in our peaceful and wonderful neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being with us.
Also, I also included signatures. There are 33 written signatures and 27 digital signatures in support of this effort.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Artur Kazian. I am the co-chair of the Douglas County Pride Fest. As the final step in the new procedures that were delivered to you last September, I'm returning to stand before you to report back on the events of the Pride Fest. Because of the intensity of this issue over the last year, I would request grace in allowing me an extra minute or so to provide you with the most accurate and complete information. We had roughly 1,300 people attend our festival, with over 2,000 e-ticket registrations, 70 vendor booths, 10 churches were represented, and 17 major sponsors in a number, in addition to a number of personal donations. Entertainment during the day included yoga workout, Disney sing-along, local talent show, lip sync competition, performances by Mile High Modern, Mile High Freedom Band, Cheer Colorado, and musical numbers performed by Spotlight Theater Group of Castle Rock. Our highly successful, family-rated, G, family-friendly, G-rated drag show consisted of three performers doing seven musical numbers, one storytime, and a juggler and a ventriloquist. Our adults after-party included two drag performers doing four musical numbers, Drag King Bingo, and Dance Party. I believe we have completely fulfilled all of your requests and requirements for complying with all the Douglas County and Town of Castle Rock zoning and ordinances. It is our stance we produced a family-friendly event that complied with all of the fairground rules and regulations, including the new additional language in the fairground agreement. With the exception of one unfortunate event, our security team along with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office had no issues to report. On a personal level, I am exhausted. Being the receptacle for hate is devastating, and having to defend ourselves against the lies and false accusations that have been directed at us by church leaders, citizens, elected officials, has taken a toll on my mental and emotional health. I was prepared to come in and praise our champions and scold our critics, calling out the hypocrisy of those who said that they were acting to protect children, and then with their lack of action when children were actually harmed. But this morning, I had an aha moment. I heard, I realized that this type of speech would only further widen the gap between two sides and would not do anything to create my, a community that I am proud to call home. If I were to call myself a Christian man, I need to model the type of love, empathy, and respect I would like to see from others. So I lay down my sword and I put down my shield. Hate and animosity are extremely heavy burdens. The anger and hate I had felt this past year caused me to cringe every time I crossed over the Douglas County border into my home county. It created a world for me in which everywhere I turned, I wondered if that person hated me and truly believes I am a pedophile, a groomer, and a sexual deviant. And I was completely ready to defend myself viciously and completely. My change of thought comes with Scripture, Matthew 5:14-16. "You are the light of the world. A city set on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do people light a lamp and put it under a basket. But on a stand, it gives light to all in the house in the same way. You let your light shine before others so that they may see your good works and give glory to your Father, who is in heaven." My heart is broken for the children and adults that were subjected to an experience that made them fearful and unwelcome in their own hometown. To Jimmy Graham and the men and women of Abel Shepherd, sorry, I scrolled. We respect everyone's right to free speech. It is one of the hallmarks of our great nation. But I ask them, or you, Jimmy, and your group, to think about this in this light. Is it more important to be right or to acknowledge that children did suffer and things could have been done in a different manner? The people of Douglas County are amazing. We can follow the trend of the nation and buy into the division and the rhetoric, or we, as a community, can acknowledge that there are differences of opinions and still unite on the premise of caring for one another, respecting each other's constitutional rights, and allowing individuals to be who they are. Commissioner Thomas, you are a champion, not necessarily of the gay community, but of the Constitution and the rights of individuals. You are a good woman, and I hope that you are able to enjoy the laughter of your granddaughter at the next Pride Fest Festival or wherever you would choose to take her. Commissioner Layden, you have demonstrated courage in coming out and being a visible member of the LGBTQ community and a Christian man. May that bravery be inspirations to others. Commissioner Teal, you have been one of our biggest critics. You did not believe we could produce a family-friendly drag show. I believe we did. I don't know if your position has changed or not. I would say to you that if one day one of your children, or in the future, your grandchildren, come to you and say, "Grandpa, I'm trans," or "I'm gay," you can say, "I accept you wholeheartedly and love you unconditionally, regardless of who you love and what your pronoun that you use." In that spirit, I ask the three of you to move past your differences and choose to work cooperatively. Being the leadership team you would hope, a high-functioning, effective team aspires to be, serving all the people of Douglas County. None of us want Douglas County to be known as a hotbed of hate and negative discourse. I would ask that you consider adding hate crime enhancements to our ordinances and laws to protect not just the gay community, but all groups, religious groups, ethnic groups, all groups, against directed hateful attacks. In conclusion, the drag show from 2023 is the example and model that we put forward from Castle Rock Pride and as, is the model we put forward from Castle Rock Pride as to the type of show and entertainment we strive for. Overall, the event was a success, and we look forward to the 2024 Doug Co. Pride Fest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kazian. Additional citizen comment? Sheriff Weekly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just want to address some of the concerns that have been brought up. Some people may or may not know, we did have a debrief session with organizers of Pride Fest yesterday. And I would like to say, I think it was very productive. And everybody came away from that meeting with better understanding. What I want the citizens of Douglas County to know is the relationship between me and Mr. Graham has been blown way out of proportion. As the elected sheriff of Douglas County, I promise you, I am not covering up for anybody. My integrity is too important. I have spent 30 years of my life, 29 years, almost 30, serving and protecting this community. I have put my life on the line for this community. I have lost friends in the line of duty for this community. The fact of the matter is, we didn't cover anything up for anybody. I had over 30 deputy sheriffs out there, prepared to deal with anything from an active shooter to riot conditions to a bomb, anything under the sun. We also had a chief deputy district attorney out there onsite, giving us legal advice. And in relation to the Abel, to the individuals who got up with the T-shirts, I was not onsite. I had command staff onsite, working with the Pride Fest security personnel to deescalate that situation. We were prepared to act. And some decisions that were made with the conversations between the Pride Fest security personnel and Jimmy Graham caused a delay in the show. And then there was negotiations for those individuals to move into the aisles during the show. That still blocked people's views. And then those individuals decided to leave, and then the show resumed. There are still several active criminal investigations going on. The results of those investigations will be made public when they are brought to fruition. I'm not at liberty to go into in-depth on, on the status of those investigations. But I want to assure the citizens of Douglas County that I serve all citizens of Douglas County without discrimination, and they can remain confident that I, as the elected sheriff, will lead that organization with honor and integrity. And if there are criminal charges that are to be brought, I will confer with the district attorney's office and bring those charges forward. I promise you that. But it's unfortunate because I truly believe overall that, that we did our, did our job well. Immediately, within hours after the Pride Fest had concluded, I had been reached out to on both sides of this issue and was told how great the sheriff's office and law enforcement in general, with Castle Rock Police Department out there, how well that we did overall. So for it to be categorized otherwise is, is very unfortunate. I'd be glad to stay afterwards and talk with anybody who wants to talk to me about it. But again, I want to assure the citizens, they don't have a sheriff at the helm over there that is acting in a corrupt manner because I assure you that Douglas County Sheriff's Office is one of the finest law enforcement agencies in the state of Colorado, not the nation. And we don't do business that way.
Thank you, Sheriff. Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Sally Wer. I live on Dutch Creek Street. My husband and I built our home in 1993. I want to just leave you with a, with just a little visual of what life in our neighborhood it looks like. We are a great neighborhood. We have the same ebb and flow as any other neighborhood. But just think about your own neighborhood. And what would it be like if you're sitting in your office in your, front of your house, and in a span of two and a half hours, 632 cars go by? Matter of fact, they line up down our street. Everybody right now is stressed, angry, and depressed, and it comes out on the drivers. We know that when we hear from our police officers and everything else hot in the field. What I want to implore with you is, you have put this neighborhood under a bus. Now, we understand that construction needs to be done. We're happy to have the construction done. When the last time it was done, in 2011, 2012, at Quebec and Lincoln, it helped our neighborhood tremendously. What happens, though, is when the construction's done, because all these people are used to using our neighborhood as a cut-through, we're going to continue to have people cutting through because it has become a habit for them. So I would implore you, in just a two and a half hour timeframe that I counted cars, we had 632 go by my house. That is repeated in the afternoon, but it continues all day long, Monday through Saturday. So I would implore you to think about what it would be like in your neighborhood if all of a sudden, the traffic in your neighborhood quadrupled, children now no longer can play in the streets, they come home from school, it's almost a nightmare with the cars coming through on our street when that school bus is there. So I would just implore you to please think about the emotional toll that you're taking on this neighborhood because you refuse to do what they, what they recommended doing back in 2011, which is putting in a temporary barrier so those people coming from, mostly off of Monarch would be my guess, and the schools, don't cut through our neighborhood. Allow them to take the arterial streets of MacArthur Ranch Road and over off of Wildcat Ridge. That's what those roads were built for. Dutch Creek was not built for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Fike, and I am a 25-year resident of Dutch Creek. We did live through that last time, 2011, 2012, got through it. It wasn't horrible. The barrier helped us considerably. I will let you know, normally I wouldn't get up and speak. This morning at 8:00 a.m., it took over 15 minutes to get out of my driveway. I live three doors from the furthest, from Lincoln, and it lines all the way back up. Nobody would let me out onto my own street. All of the neighbors cutting through sat and would not let me out. I drive a big old red car. It's not an issue of them not seeing me. I finally waved at somebody and said, "Can I get out?" Somebody let me out. I can't imagine going through this through 2024. So I beg you, please help us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Commissioners. I've had cancer surgeries twice on my mouth, so if you don't understand me, ask me to repeat it, please. I'm a 21-year resident, 22-year resident of the Montage neighborhood in Dutch Creek. I thought it was very interesting. My neighbor Andrew handed you portfolios. Commissioner Teal and Commissioner Layden actually looked at them, and Commissioner Thomas pushed us to the side. That kind of bothered me that, because we've been talking back and forth and emailing. There are no other streets in Highlands Ranch that attach two major thoroughfares that don't have a stop sign, a stoplight, or a roundabout. And like Andrew mentioned over by Highlands Ranch High School, they put a gate in. Okay, I have safety concerns. The speed signs, like we talked about, are put in horrible locations. They're put up above towards the top of Lincoln. And so when people come up Dutch Creek, they have to slow down on the curve. So they will never reach the full speed they do on the straightaway. So that's inaccurate. They need to be moved. The job description for the deputies is for a deterrent. They're not supposed to write tickets. That kind of bothers me because speeding is speeding. Right now, today, drivers are heading this corner. I would love for you guys to come out. I'll give you 10 minutes. You can park in my driveway. You may not be able to get out, but they come around the corner and they cut the corner. I've almost witnessed two head-on collisions coming back from my mailbox. 10 years ago, I was going up my street. I wasn't going fast enough, and someone decided to pass me, almost went head-on into the school bus. Okay, picking up the children, just picked them up. My daughter was passing her car, getting ready to lift out, and to see how she was going to get out, someone slowed down and used profanity and said they would take that shortcut anytime they... shortcut anytime they want. Okay? We have additional, and another issue right now, on Quebec. People at the tunnel are going in the median now, in between the yellow lines, going all the way up to cut through the post office, to avoid the stop. That's a safety concern. We have additional traffic. Obviously, we know that northbound Quebec turn into our neighborhood. Eastbound drivers are also turning right at Quebec, and doing a U-turn, to come back through Dutch Creek. Okay? Top of Dutch Creek. Now, not only are they trying to get their path through to Lincoln, they're going left to Quebec northbound. So we're doubling our traffic. It wasn't just the people that cut through, that are trying to get to I-25, it's the people that are trying to go through Quebec. Bottom, drivers are turning out left, and commercial vehicles are cutting through. I just sent you guys an email yesterday, there were street commercial vehicles on Saturday, to today. I'm talking big semis, dump trucks. You have three options. Put the barrier back. It worked 10 years ago, it'll work again. If not, let's put the barrier at the bottom of Dutch Creek and Millstone, and let it flow through those other two streets. And that would prevent the estuary wear and tear on just our street, it would spread it. Or you could alternate it. So I appreciate the time, I'd like you to consider this, because I don't want convenience to be a priority over the safety of our residents.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us. Additional citizen comment? Any other citizen comment in the room? Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have one online comment.
Okay.
Robert Marshall. Mr. Marshall, you're unmuted, go ahead. Oops. Hang on.
Hello, this is Bob Marshall. I live in Highlands Ranch. I was calling in, I'm winging this a bit, because I had one item I was intending to address, and it's been worked over a bit, and another one had come to my attention. But when I thought about it, they kind of go together, under one umbrella. And the umbrella really is tightening up ethics and integrity in government. And I don't mean it to be as an attack. I hope people might take a step back, and realize, we may have gotten into a comfortable one-state good old boy system here in Douglas County, and there isn't a lot of self-reflection that goes on. I was at the Pride Fest. I was planning on going to the State Fair that morning, and for the whole day, stopping by Pride Fest at 11:00, and go on to the State Fair, found out, there were a bunch of yahoos that were going to show up at 5:00 o'clock, and open carry to, is what I understood, to intimidate people. So I had to cancel all my plans that day, and go at 5:00, in order to be onsite, to at least see what happened. What happened was very disturbing. People that disrupt an event, it is not a First Amendment issue. 40 minutes, it was shut down. Civil disobedience has a great, long history in America, but the point of it is, you're willing to accept the punishment of the state, in order to make your point. There was none there. Their kids were crying. There was a kid crying his eyes out, 10 years old, next to me, in fear of what these men were going to do to his sister. So again, I was very disturbed at the reaction that occurred there, or lack of it, by the governmental authorities in Douglas County. The second issue that popped up, is I was very pleased to receive an invitation to the Douglas County Community Foundation. And was planning on trying to de-conflict another event I have on that date, to try and be able to do both. But I found out the tickets were $250 apiece for individuals. So I wanted to double-check the ethics on, was I'd be able to accept something like that. Found out, well, yeah, they were free tables for the county, because the county gave the organization $200,000. I did a little more research just today, just off the cuff, and found out, there are multiple officials on the Board of Directors of this organization. I looked up all the sorts of other community foundations in Colorado, at least nine, not a single elected official on any of their Board of Directors. And in fact, Pike Peak Community Foundation, which is what this Douglas County Community Foundation came off of in 2000, as an affiliate, not a single elected official on their Board of Directors. So it's a little disturbing that public money is flowing from the county directly to an organization, where we have elected officials on it. It seems almost like a specialized slush fund. And again, I'm not trying to cast aspersions, it's just these things seem to be going on quite a lot, where people don't take a step back, and ask themselves, is this right? Even if I can get away with it under ethics rules, does it look right? So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Additional citizen comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no additional comment.
Troy, thank you for that. I'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any Commissioner comments.
If I could ask if Dan Roberts could come up and speak about the comments we heard about Dutch Creek. This morning, when I came out of Quebec, the northbound Quebec was backed up almost to the stoplight at Glendale, I'm sorry, Glenstone. And so a neighbor had called me and let me know, that there were going to be people here today, talking about Dutch Creek. So Doug made arrangements for Dan to be here to talk about the traffic numbers and what's going on.
Well, I think that would be appropriate, and I think Dan has been actively involved with all the Public Works and engineering activities around this particular project. Dan?
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Dan Roberts, Assistant Director of Public Works. So Brian Schultz is the project manager on the Quebec-Lincoln University Project. He's actually out on the project today, so I'm here to talk about it a little bit. Want to back up a little bit, and talk about the planning stages, because I think that's important for everybody to understand. Moving into this project, so we started the initial stages of study and design three years ago. And during that, the last couple of years, we've looked at several alternative ways to build this intersection. It's a significant intersection in the county, carries about 33,000 cars a day. We looked at the possibility of closing the intersection, which would have had too significant of an impact to the county, so really discarded that. We did consider nighttime work, recognized that that had also a very significant impact to all the surrounding neighborhoods. Typically, at night, you can hear construction traffic for about a half a mile. So really landed on the third option, which is build it during the day, and phase it in such a way to minimize the traffic as much as possible. We fully recognize and understand the impact that it's having on Dutch Creek right now. We phased the project to, as best we can, minimize that impact, but understand that it's still going to happen. Work started August 14th. We finished Phase 1 in about a week and a half. Phase 2 is under construction today, and Phase 2 is reconstruction of the right turn lane from northbound Quebec to eastbound Lincoln Avenue. And that is having a big impact on the neighborhood, because that lane was actually built, to get people to not cut through the neighborhood. So once we finish replacing that, we do believe it'll relieve a lot of that cut-through traffic, but as noted by the residents, I think there is a tendency to cut through that anyway. Phase 3 begins September 25th, and will run through mid-November. And Phase 3 is reconstruction of two northbound lanes on Quebec, from Dutch Creek to Lincoln. Again, that will have an impact, because with the backup of traffic, people are going to take that cut-through. Once Phase 3 is finished, then we're going to shut the project down for the winter. So it'll close middle of November, it'll be fully open to traffic, just like it was before construction started. Then construction begins again next March, and will take through September. But we believe that once we finish building the two through lanes, northbound, and the right turn lane that's Phase 2 and Phase 3, that that will significantly relieve the cut-through traffic in the neighborhood. We have taken seven different measures, to try and reduce the impact to the neighborhood, really trying to address the backups as much as we can, address speeding and safety concerns in the neighborhood. Several were noted by the residents. We've installed local traffic only signage at Dutch Creek and Quebec. The project is hiring off-duty sheriff officers, off-duty deputies that are out there on the job site, to act as a deterrent on the project. We've added, we just added the speed radar signs. As noted, there is one of the signs that we are looking at moving, because it probably is not placed properly. The other benefit of the signs is, it'll be providing us speed and volume data. Now, we need about a week of collecting data, and those signs were just installed last Thursday. Once we have collected that information, we'll be able to better talk about what other mitigation measures might take place. So generally, in Douglas County, and under our roadway design standards, we design residential streets for a maximum volume of about 1,500 cars a day. With a peak hour volume, then, about 10% of that, so 150 cars per hour. So when we see volumes that exceed that, then we do have significant concerns about those volumes. So if we, once we collect data for a week or so from that sign, we'll report back to you on what those volumes look like, to see whether or not there's other measures that should be considered. We've installed signage to try and route traffic that's coming northbound out of Castle Pines, around the construction zone, because there are alternative routes. We did create a temporary right-in, right-out, because we had significant safety concerns during this phase of construction, for left turn movements through the intersection of Dutch Creek onto Quebec. We think that in Phase 3, we'll actually be able to remove that left turn restriction, so that, because of the configuration of the traffic control in the construction zone. And we've added signage on Lincoln to indicate, actually, we're in the process of adding signage on Lincoln, because we have cars that are turning off of Lincoln, onto Dutch Creek, going through the neighborhood, and then they get to Dutch Creek and Quebec, and we've prohibited the left turn there. So there's really no reason for them to take that route, they need to just proceed through the construction zone. Also have a couple other considerations, that the neighborhood has recommended to us, that we'll be looking into. So those are the measures we're taking. Realize that it is a huge impact to the neighborhood. We have folks onsite all the time, hoping to accelerate as much as we can, the construction, because the sooner we get it done with, the better off we are. We're actually placing concrete today, on that northbound to eastbound right turn line. So with that, I'll open up any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Dan?
So I'm wondering if the people here would like to talk with you afterwards, would you guys be interested in having nighttime construction, so that during the day, the lanes would be open, and the traffic would not be coming through your neighborhood? Is that something that could be considered, or not?
So I would suggest that the impact is so significant, that we should avoid doing that. But I'll be glad to wait after the meeting, and outside in the hallway, I know you have another meeting, land use meeting, that's already an hour late, and be glad to talk to anybody.
Well, I'll just say that our staff is phenomenal. And Dan, you've done a wonderful job, and we all take the role seriously, that we work for the citizens, not the other way around. And I want to commend all of the citizens, especially the longtime residents of Dutch Creek, that have made your homes there. This isn't a convenient meeting, this is middle of the day, so you've probably taken off time, and jobs, and other commitments to be here. So we really appreciate that. And this, I'm an attorney by trade, this packet wasn't casually assembled, so thank you for the work that went into that. I will read all of this. I'm very aware of this concern, and I'll just tell you candidly, as a Commissioner, my view is, this intersection is going to alleviate a lot of congestion for the people that travel that thoroughfare on a daily basis, and it'll also be a pretty significant benefit, I would presume, for the residents of Dutch Creek. This is not a private neighborhood, which is persuasive to me, but the flip side is, you would not be experiencing this increase in traffic, if it weren't for the county deciding to do this improvement. So I'm really balancing both. I'm not sure that we've landed on the perfect solution yet, from my opinion. So when I sit down with Doug to board, and do agenda setting on Thursday of this week, I'm going to ask for a work session, so that we can walk through these issues, the concerns and considerations of the residents, that have so graciously taken the time to be with us. I want to make sure that you feel listened to, and that we do in fact listen. And I would really invite you, Dan, to come with some recommendations, that are consistent with the challenges we're hearing, that could at best alleviate these concerns. I think what's also relevant to me, is that we have some precedent, back from, it sounds like 2011, 2012, where there was a barrier erected. So a level of expectation has been created in this community, that has not been forgotten. So I think we need some legal analysis on this, too. Today and now is probably not the time and place for that, but if it does please the board, I would like an opportunity to discuss this next week. Any additional thoughts or comments? Commissioner Teal, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I made a commitment to you guys, I've been through some pretty gnarly construction events, when I was on the Castle Rock Council, that had a huge effect on the people I represented. So, folks, I feel for you. I've lived through similar things, here in Castle Rock myself. But I made a commitment, that based on my experience going through that, you know, listen, I'm deferring to you guys, I would very much be interested in not trying to remote control this solution. I'm much more interested in what you two think, since you live in the area, and Commissioner Thomas, this being your district, definitely interested in your thoughts on it. I got to tell you, having taken a look at the 2012 project details, that was provided by our resident, I'm open to taking a look at those, and seeing if what worked then, can work now. But I'm very open-minded, I'd like us to have a good solution. We can say it's all going to be over in November, Dan, but boy, it still sucks when you're living through it. So if we can get that addressed a little sooner than that, and Chair, I absolutely support having a work session on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Thomas, anything else?
I'd be fine with that. I just texted Doug and Janet a picture, my house looks up at Quebec, and it looks like traffic is backed up past Glenstone right now. And it just seems like to me mathematically, that if we can scoot cars off of Quebec, and go east, that's less cars that are packing up the intersection itself. And mathematically, it just makes sense to me, that we alleviate as much off of Quebec as we can. And that's why we are here today. And if working at night is not an option, then I appreciate the work session, but I'd ask that we consider all the other people that are backed up on Quebec as well.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Thomas. And I know that all three of us are very committed to doing the right thing on this. So I would say, Dan, thank you for your gracious willingness to stay, and for those citizens that are concerned about Dutch Creek. Dan will be available to have that discussion now, and we would invite you to that work session next week, either remotely or in person, if you'd like to listen in or contribute in any way. So thank you for that. Any additional, Doug, did you have something? Okay. Any additional Commissioner comment? I'll just add that, real quickly, on Representative Marshall's comments, with all due respect, contributing money toward emergency relief in our community is something that I will always stand by. We saw the Marshall fire, we also saw COVID that we lived through for two and a half years, and when there is an emergency in our community, I want to continue to support that. I want to just speak to Pride Fest, and I really have to commend and praise the organizers, and Art, and all of you, that have worked so diligently, not just today, in the last week, in the last month, but for over a year and a half, to try to get this to the right space. And from my view, I was there for most of the day, you pulled it off. It was an incredibly successful event, from a Pride Fest standpoint, and from a county standpoint, from my vantage point. And as you stated, it was a G-rated performance. Tons of families, tons of churches, tons of people, I saw smiles, I saw laughter, I saw a lot of positive things there. I'm sorry that not all of that got picked up by the media, but we do know, if it bleeds, it leads. So sometimes the bad stuff does get out. But, you know, I appreciate the comments of those that showed up today, but I'm not sure, I hope that those individuals, including you, Ms. Lee's, have an opportunity to listen in to the conversation we had yesterday, which was challenging, but law enforcement was there, Pride Fest was there, as was Abel Shepherd, and many others, from that organization, and members of the community. It was tough, it was tense, it was emotional, but we did, I believe, have a productive conversation. And at the end of the day, I think some bridges were built. And when people don't politicize issues, and really are willing to engage face-to-face, it's hard to hate somebody you're sitting right across from. And I applaud the courage of Art and others, to confront those that may have challenges, and vice versa. I think there were hurt feelings on all sides. But what was really interesting to me, is that everyone in that room yesterday, was there to protect kids, and to do good things in our in our community. So I really appreciated the verses you shared with us, Art, and as a fellow person of faith and a fellow member of the community, I am really grateful for what you pulled together. I also want to recognize our sheriff's office, that people will never know the unseen effort and planning that went into making that event successful, and it was a lot of sweat equity and communication, so I just want to acknowledge that. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, if you don't mind, I was going to talk about 9/11. I'm sure all of us remember where we were on that fateful day, but in the interest of time, I will not. I will just say that I opened this packet and saw that the speech was written that Mr. Parrish was delivering, and so I put it here to give him my full attention and not be distracted from what you were saying while I was looking through the packet. So if you thought I was dismissive, that was not my point, I was giving you my full attention. So thank you for being here. I have nothing else.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And we're just in the Commissioner comment portion, and I'll just ask if there's any additional Commissioner comment.
No comments.
Okay. So with that, our next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at 1:30 p.m. I'm going to adjourn and do about a five-minute recess. Tremendous thanks for those that have been patient with our public and land use hearing. We will reconvene that in about five minutes. Thank you very much.